Okay, welcome everyone. We have a 6:45 and we're a few minutes behind that workshop on sidewalk plow route adjustments. So if we could just try to be as brief as possible.
Very much so.
All right, thank you sir.
Good evening councillor, mayor. At your desks there is, should be a map. This map is similar to the one that's on the city's webpage, under the map gallery. That kind of gives you an overview. I know it's still, even though at this scale it may be hard to see in places, but it's really more for tonight, just to get a sense on what the city manages in each storm. So currently, we manage after each storm, or during each storm, 52 miles of sidewalk throughout the city. Those sidewalks are selected based on previous council actions and history, and most of them, there's two sets of focus. There are kind of high priority, primary routes. Those are, we talked last time about arterials and major collectors and the major connections throughout the city, especially the pedestrian connections in this case. And then there are some secondary plow routes, that are really the interconnecting neighborhoods between those connections. And that's what you have in front of you today. Each storm's a little bit different. One of the reasons I want to talk to you about this a little bit tonight, sidewalk plowing has been a subject quite a bit in the last couple of weeks to a couple of months. In the past, at least last year when I was here, and I talked to Ed a little bit, there hasn't been as many inquiries. So there's just been kind of a heightened set of inquiries lately about why we plow this, why we don't manage that, and how we manage, why it takes us a while to get there. So I wanted to give you an update, and then I'm going to give you a flavor for some of the inquiries, then later I'd like to come back with some clear trade-offs and some clear recommendations for you to act on. Changes to the sidewalk plow routes require council action, so that's part of this introduction tonight. Each storm is different. You know, depending on the amount of snow, the type of snow, whether it's heavy snow or light snow, we attack that snow with four units, three of which are kind of traditional sidewalk plows, that are either equipped, or they're equipped with both, so they either field one or the other, a snowplow unit, or a V-plow unit. There's also something called the Toolcat, which is more similar to a Bobcat, or a rugged farm kind of lawn tractor, that has a blower and a single plow on it. So it's really four units that go out each storm. And the amount, what they go out with, whether they go out with a V-plow, or they go out with a snow blower, it really depends on the character of the storm, and the material that's there when we go out. What was the last storm, or the last group of storms like? We're awful, it takes us about 13 hours to get a cycle. You know, they travel between 1 and 5 miles an hour. There are a lot of obstructions along sidewalks. We've been talking about poles, we're going to talk again tonight about poles, but there's everything from that, to retaining walls, to other things, so they need to travel relatively slowly. They get damaged a lot, just because of the hazardous environment they're in, running into things. So it takes about 13 hours for a snowplow unit to get around to all of, do a cycle. And oftentimes, in a larger storm, we're doing at least two cycles. So to clear all of the sidewalks throughout the city that are shown on your map, might take anywhere on a really light storm, to a day, to up to three days, and then if we're getting melting and refreezing, which you've seen a lot of that this year, they may be out for another day or two, sanding sidewalks and clearing that ice material. Things that affect their ability to do that, like we said, warm and cold nights, vehicles parking on the sidewalk, people plowing snow into the sidewalks, which councillor Ray, we're working on a number of those issues as we speak. So Public Works goes out, code goes out, and tries to rectify those issues, because they not only block sidewalks, but they also block hydrants and other things. As we said, utility poles, everything from wood debris, you know, shopping bags you get at Shaws, you've torn those, they tear easy when you're carrying groceries, but if you ever grab them in a fist, you know, you roll them up, it's almost impossible to tear them. Those go into a sidewalk plow and they just wind up, and eventually the sidewalk plow needs to come back to the garage, and all that stuff needs to be cut out. But if there's cable, string, rope, wood debris, wood debris will break shear pins frequently, rocks, it tends to throw them, but wood softens off, so it'll just seize the mechanism up. And there's just a lot of trash and debris in the sidewalk, from time to time, or things that get into the sidewalk. Additionally, we've talked a little bit about snowfighting. A lot of the same personnel that are out manning our 30 units, that are out on the road, plowing the road, are also the same people plowing, manning these four, or personing these four units. Right now, we have some newer people that aren't credentialed to be in a larger snowplow, so it's kind of working out well right now. Earlier this year, we were short a couple people, so we really didn't have the people to, so we're always shuffling people around, which is okay, it's just, it's a shuffling to get the best effect. But those all can affect how long it takes to get the sidewalks cleared. I'll give you a couple examples of things that have come up recently, that we'd like to talk about changes in the future. One is Molson Way. I think everybody knows where Molson Way is, out on the northern end of the city. It's an industrial park, there's some restaurants out there. Currently, the transit system drives through Molson Way, and there's a stop, or just before the beginning of the year they did. They're changing their routing, so that bus stop will no longer be on Molson Way, it'll be down on Main Street. So people commuting to work, people commuting home, people venturing to those businesses, using public transportation, will now need to walk a further distance than they did before. Additionally, a lot of those businesses along Molson Way, or a lot of the people that work there tend to exercise at lunchtime, and if you drive over there at lunch, there tend to be a fair amount of people using the side of the road or the sidewalk. So that request, I think we have a couple ways. We'll come back with a recommendation to you, to address Molson Way. One is a low impact, but will be a little less quality, and that's because there aren't a lot of poles along Molson Way, or mailboxes. That's something we could do fairly low impact with the wing of the plow. So when we're done, you know, you see us wing back throughout the city, push the snow back, we just simply lift the wing a little bit and push the sidewalk back to the edge of the roadway. That won't be as clear a sidewalk, that'll have a little more snow and ice on it, take a little longer for the sun to clear in February and March. The other way is to reroute to sidewalk plow, to that part. But that's going to take, you know, at a mile an hour, that's going to be an hour or more. What we'd like to do is be able to suggest to you, if we're going to use a sidewalk plow, is there another lower priority in the city we would trade that off for? Second one is Holland Street, and I apologize for the write-up on Holland Street. Our map that I've just gave you is incorrect, and one of the reasons I gave it to you, because it was incorrect, and I discovered it today. Holland Street was not, by dear ago, Federal Credit Union was not plowed in the past, and through a miscommunication at Public Works, not coming here, we've begun to plow and fulfill that request. So that's something we'd just like to reaffirm here at some point, but on the map, it also shows that, plowing the wrong side of the road. So one of the things I've been doing is I've asked Deputy Director Bates and our supervisor to go and make sure this map is completely accurate, including which side of the road. A lot of time, we've picked one side of the road as to the other, just simply due to the obstructions.
So, just to be clear, you're talking about Holland Street between Oak and Main?
Yes.
And it's the side that the credit union is on, is the side that we are plowing currently?
Yes. On your memo, there's a map in there, it would be the northern side, the upside, the top side of Holland Street, along that large parking lot.
Thank you.
And that's really their new facility, and getting their workers from that parking lot into that facility. So that is being done today. So that request was fulfilled, probably a little bit prematurely, but it was fulfilled. Park Street and Bradley Street are two others that we've recently, Bradley's not in your packet, that just came in today. But at some of those side streets, those secondary streets, we talked about where we're plowing one side of the street, and we've probably chosen that, either due to the amount of pedestrian perceived, pedestrian traffic, or in some cases, like Bradley, it may simply be that we can only do one side, and we've chosen the side because the other side has obstructions like poles in the sidewalk. Takes about 60 inches for a sidewalk plow to pass width-wise, and about 8 to 9 feet, just a little under 8 feet, to pass underneath, like pole guy wires, or signs, or anything. It takes about 8 feet for them to pass underneath, especially with a blower unit on. So tonight, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update, give you the map, and we'll come back with these and any others we receive in the next couple of weeks, with some recommendations on how we either can or cannot fulfill these, or should or should not fulfill these, and some recommendations if we think it's something we should fulfill, give you a recommendation on something else that might come off, so that we're not continuing to add to that two to three day. Pedestrian traffic in the city is very important, it's very, the city is very pedestrian-based, and people really rely on it for their livelihoods, more so than just recreation. So we take it very seriously.
Okay, any questions or comments, councillor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the maps from a couple of years back, and Connors just opened, so I imagined it's going to be a little bit changed with the Connors School, because I believe there's some sidewalk on the same side on Barlet Street. I don't know if that's also listed as priority?
We, right now, we used to plow that with a wing, like we described on Molson Way. This year, we're using a sidewalk plow. I know former councillor Markcott wrote to me over the weekend, and said he was appreciative of how quickly we were clearing the hill. I haven't gone out and looked at it directly myself, but he had a little testimonial about how that was working.
No other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, so at this point, I'll call the regular business meeting back to order. And first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of January 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Moved by councillor Jensen, seconded by councillor LaJoy. All in favor?
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0. And Mr. Mayor, if we could just back out for the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council update as well?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hope Rovito, I'm chair of the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council, and I'm here to do the monthly update of what we've been doing. In recent months, LYAC has continued to bring awareness about all that Lewiston has to offer, such as at our November Lewiston Places event. We've also taken a stand against bullying in our community, like we did last year. In that regard, we've been brainstorming about ways to help bully-proof Lewiston, and to bring attention to the hurtful effects of bullying. We were initially trying to get national anti-bullying speaker Jody Blanco here for community presentations, however, cost was an issue. As we talked further, we realized that three of us on LYAC, Bree, Matthew, Riley, Emma, and myself, Hope Rovito, have been horribly bullied over the years. LYAC decided that we should tell our stories in a panel forum to communicate our experiences, as well as encourage respect and kindness, and discuss ways to prevent bullying here. The forum will be held on Friday, February 28th, at 6:00 PM, and we're going to hold it at Geiger Elementary in the gym. It looks like Ms. Maine will be able to join us, and we've asked our advisor, Dottie Paramlithier, to share her experiences as well. There will also be a question and answer time. In addition, on January 16th, 11 ELYAC members were going to visit the Maine Senate, have a tour with Senator Nate Libby, and meet with Governor Janet Mills, but our meeting with the governor, or for our meeting with the governor, we had developed a list of talking points, as to how we can better advocate for and promote the positives of Lewiston, especially since Governor Mills previously called Lewiston the gem of Central Maine. The trip was canceled due to a blizzard, but it will be rescheduled in the near future. Are there any questions?
I agree with much of. Okay, this is a public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. That is not on the agenda. There are three minutes per speaker, is there anyone in the public that'd like to get up and speak? Thank you, we'll move to agenda item number one.
Item number one, public hearing in first passage of ordinance, amending Chapter 18, Article 6, Section 18-96F, to the Code of Ordinances, Registration Process Requirement for Multi-Family Buildings. Requested action to conduct the public hearing and to approve final passage of an ordinance, amending Chapter 18, Article 6, Section 18-96F, to the Code of Ordinances, Registration Process Requirement for Multi-Family Buildings.
So moved. Second.
So moved by councillor Ray, seconded by councillor Jensen, and the public hearing is now open. Ed, if you could just give us a brief, this was workshop last week?
Yes, and was first read same time. This basically is an effort to simplify the application process for registration of buildings, of multi-family unit buildings. It's doing two things. One is, the original way the ordinance was written, literally the application form would have required that every unit in the building have a separate line, to indicate what floor it was on, how many bedrooms it has, stuff like that, which we thought was unworkable. So we've gone to a system where simply they'll report the number of floors in the building, and the number of units by type. So it'll be much simpler for the applicant to fill it out. Then secondly, we found we had some information that was duplicated. We were asking for both the real estate number, which is the city's ID that we generally use for lots, plus the map and lot. Both of that information ties together to the same location. Most people don't know map and lot. Real estate number's a little bit more obvious, because that's on your bill, so we've eliminated the map and lot, and just gone with the real estate number.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from city councillors? To the public? Questions or comments from councillors? Call the roll.
Councillor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 2.
Item number 2, public hearing and final passage for ordinance, adopting a new Chapter 71 to the Code of Ordinances, regulating above-ground power, fiber, and telecommunications installations, including utility poles in the public right-of-way. Requested action to approve final reading of an ordinance, adopting a new Chapter 71 to the Code of Ordinances, regulating above-ground power, fiber, and telecommunications installations, including utility poles in the public right-of-way, and repealing Section 66-8B of the Code, dealing with placement of poles in the right-of-way.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor LaJoy, seconded by councillor Pettingill. Mr. Barrett, if you could, oh.
Sure, there are two parts to this ordinance. First part is Article 1, which deals with the traditional utility pole regulations. It basically sets out the standards that are required to apply for a pole permit, and to have that permit approved. It specifically addresses the ADA requirements, to ensure that new poles do not block sidewalks. You heard some of that problem earlier this evening, from the Public Works Director. Gives us the authority to address unsafe conditions associated with poles, like loose guy wires, for example, where we can give the utility notice, and they have to quickly respond to try to take care of the hazard, at least short-term, and then fix it permanently. Gives us the ability to require utilities to remove old poles when they are replaced with new ones. There's a time limit established in the ordinance of 180 days. Similarly specifies, they have 180 days to relocate a pole, that's required to be moved for a street or a sidewalk project. It specifically safeguards what's known as the municipal space on poles. It's an area on telephone poles that municipalities have the right of access to, for municipal purposes. It's been honored in the breach historically, but the legislature has strengthened that language, and we wanted to include it in our ordinance as well, so it was clear that we had that ability. And again, specifies the height above sidewalk for any installation, to ensure that we don't block sidewalk plowing, or create a hazard. The second part, which is actually the longer part, deals with small cell technology. Small cells are small cellular units, that are installed throughout a community, in particular, as we go to 5G cellular. Those units are going to have to be located generally within 300 to 500 feet of each other, to give full coverage, so there will be a great, large number of them installed. The FCC has put some limitations on what municipalities can do, but there are some things we can do, to govern the installation of those kinds of setups. First, we can require a permit, which this ordinance does. It sets out the kind of information they have to give us, in the application, and the standards for approval. It specifies that we much prefer co-location of these installations, on existing utility poles or buildings, as opposed to putting in new poles. We kind of think we have enough poles in our right-of-way around town. Gives us some ability to set standards, to limit the impact of these installations in certain areas, such as historic districts, and areas where we already have required utilities to be located underground, and does give us the authority to charge fees, and to impose penalties for violations of the ordinance. Some of the same requirements that we have on poles would fall in here. Installations have to be so high above ground, they can't be, create problems for our sidewalk plows, or pedestrians, or other users of the sidewalk, and generally, things along those lines.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from city councillors? Councillor Ray?
Mr. Barrett, so we currently do not have a fee structure. Are we waiting on a response from the FCC, or when will that come about?
We have not had a fee structure for, well, our fee structure for the typical pole permit has been $10.
Set by state statute.
It was set by state statute. The state eliminated that, and allowed it up to the community. We are recommending a fee structure later tonight, which we're going to ask you to table, because we have some technical problems. That would basically say it would be a $500 fee, for up to five installations, and $100 for each one after that. That basically tries to comply with the FCC's guidance. Federal Communications Commission has kind of established what they call Safe Harbor standards. They're not requirements, they're not federal regulations, but basically, it's FCC saying if you charge that amount, you're justified, and it's unlikely that anyone would question it. So that's the basis that we were using those numbers on.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, I'll turn it over to the public. Back to the council. Call the roll.
Councillor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 3.
Item number 3, public hearing and final passage for ordinance, amending Appendix A of the Zoning and Land Use Code relating to solar energy systems. Requested action to approve final reading of an ordinance, amending Appendix A of the Zoning and Land Use Code relating to solar energy systems.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Ray, seconded by councillor Jensen. If we could, just a brief update, we also worked up this recently.
Correct. Yep, again, we're just looking for you folks to provide clarification in the zoning ordinance for a specific definition for solar energy. We don't have that currently, so if anybody wanted to propose a solar array, or something of that nature, they would have to go through a two-step process, they would have to make an argument that's similar to a utility structure, and then they would have to go through the review process. This amendment comes up with specific definitions for different types of solar devices, and lists them all also as a utility structure, so it streamlines the process and provides clarification with definitions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from councillors? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Councillor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 5.
Item number 4?
4, yes.
Item number 4. Resolve, amending Master Policy Number 81, Miscellaneous Fees and Penalties, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 71, Above-Ground Power, Fiber, and Telecommunications. Requested action to approve the resolve, amending Master Policy Number 81, Miscellaneous Fees and Penalties, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 71, Above-Ground Power, Fiber, and Telecommunications.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Joy, seconded by councillor Jalinas. Questions?
Yes, I would ask that the council cable this to the next regular meeting. We have time to do that, because the ordinance itself that this is based on doesn't go into effect for 30 days. The difficulty is a technical one, we need to verify or figure out if the way we set up the fee can be handled by our computer system. The fee is $500 for up to five facilities, and Kathy just needs to take a look at that and see if that's possible within our system, because fees have always before been tied to a specific location. So if there are five poles that come in, and are in five different places in town, we're not sure exactly how the system can handle it, so give us a couple of weeks, we can figure that out, and come back with a solution.
And do we need a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Motion moved by councillor Clement, seconded by councillor Ray. Any questions? All in favor?
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 5, for real this time?
Item number 5, order authorizing the city administrator to execute the lease between the City of Lewiston and the Department of Public Safety, Maine Drug Enforcement Agency. Requested action to approve the order, authorizing the city administrator to execute the lease between the City of Lewiston and the Department of Public Safety, Maine Drug Enforcement Agency.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Clement, seconded by councillor Pettingill. Brief update.
Heather?
Certainly, as mentioned in the workshop last week, the MDEA has expressed interest on moving their facility within the Park Street facility, and they are looking at providing, are leasing 2,138 square feet of space, at a cost of rental income of $15,000 per year.
Okay, thank you.
And you have a new copy, because the original number we had for square footage was incorrect, and this is updated to the correct number.
Okay, any questions, comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council? All in favor? Say that again? Oh, call the roll.
Real call, that's okay. Councillor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 6?
Item number 6, amendments to the traffic schedule regarding parking prohibited on a portion of Newman Street. Requested action to adopt the proposed amendments to the traffic schedule to prohibit parking on the odd-numbered side of the street for portions of Newman Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Joy, seconded by councillor Pettingill.
You can open the floor for a council discussion?
Yeah.
If you'd like it, we do have the motion on the floor, and it says presented.
So nothing presented besides that?
We usually don't tend to have staff presentations on traffic schedule, we can certainly be happy to answer any questions if you'd like, but most of the information is right in that memo from the police department there.
All right, very good, thank you. Any questions from the city council? Ms. Ray?
Always. So, the memo notes that 66 feet from the extension of the gutter line, whatever that means, is that the whole length of the street, or is that just a portion?
I believe that's just a portion leading up to the intersection.
Okay. And it's based on the curb that was installed? Let's see.
With the resign of Newman Street, there were a couple citizen concerns on how parking interacted with the intersection, so this was born out of several citizen concerns.
Thank you.
Any other questions? To the public? Back to the council? Councillor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say, being that this is in my Ward, Word 5, I am supportive of the measure. Checking it out myself, I can kind of see where the need for this comes from, so I do want to say that I'm in support of this, and thank city staff for getting this done, as well as the Lewiston Police Department, I think Officer St. Lawrence. Thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Councillor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
And word 1?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Seven.
Reports and updates.
Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to give an update on the school committee. We met in an all-day retreat on a date I can't now remember, a recent Saturday, to discuss, discuss our mission, vision, and goals. We chose a vice chair in Megan Parks. We talked about subcommittees, which will be negotiations, policy, curriculum, and facilities. Negotiations, obviously, working with our union contracts to get those collective bargaining agreements. We usually do that through interest-based bargaining through the school system, so a little different from what the city does, but still important. Policy to address many of our policies in review, make sure we're in compliance with state law, especially curriculum. We'll be looking at the policies that have to do with curriculum, and also, the superintendent has noted that the current structure of the curriculum office isn't suiting our needs, and so they might take a look at addressing that. And then facilities, which I think might help with the opening of the new wing that went through in the vote in November, as well as some other issues or concerns with facilities. If you do see a school committee member, definitely remember to thank them for their service, because we now will be meeting one Saturday a month, in addition to our regular meetings, and also adding in the subcommittee meetings, so they are, we are doing the work of trying to get us to where we need to be. So maybe some extra gratitude in the room for that. Our next meeting is next Monday. That's our first regular meeting. It will be at 6:00 PM. We're continuing the early start time into this school committee schedule. I have another update.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm gonna toss it to Dale for seniors.
We've, Counselor Joy, Counselor Ray, Jason Hankin, the head of Recreation Department, myself, and Deputy Dotay met with the seniors program on a couple of occasions. The most recent, I believe, was middle of last week. Again, I don't have a calendar in front of me, so I got the date wrong. Back in 2012, they came under the umbrella of the Rec Department, I think it was 2012, by a council action. We've been operating for a number of years. There was some concern from the board on how that would continue, and what level of support they would get from the Rec Department. After those two meetings, I think we came to a good place, where we're gonna just renew our understanding. One, that the seniors board needs to work within the policies of the city, whether it has to do with equal opportunity or financial management, and we'll continue to manage their funds. The city agreed to continue to respect the board's identity, and their programming, and their leadership within their group, as opposed to some other, opposed to some other programs. They really have a organized board that does look out for that membership, and, and really understands that membership. So I think we've just reaffirmed a partnership. The next couple of weeks, we'll be putting that into writing, sharing that between us and the senior, seniors board, come to an agreement, and then maybe present it to council, so again, we can put that back into the council notes, so seven or eight years from now, when these kind of things come up, we have a history of, of how this all evolved. Is that close?
Yeah, I think that's it. And I, we wanted to publicly discuss it, because it's such an important population, and, you know, their work over at the Armory to bring that community together is important to Lewiston, and so sending that signal was important to those of us in the room.
May serve. We, I was surprised at how broad of a community they serve. It goes well beyond the borders of Lewiston. I'm, apparently, I'm actually eligible to be a member if I so choose.
Congratulations.
Yeah. I don't know if that's...
Okay, any other reports or updates? All right, thank you.